Make a motion that we come out of executive session?
No, I'll second it.
We have a motion second by Lou, all in favor? Any opposed? No? Okay, thanks. Thank you, welcome. Summer's over, I guess, we're back.
I don't say it.
We're back here. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll take item 5.0, recognition comments from the Chair first. Again, repeat, welcome back after our summer bank. I appreciate the Board, all your efforts in this next, in this upcoming year, and hopefully we get off to a good start. The Board met earlier in a workshop to set goals, our Board goals for the upcoming year, and we did, without specific wording, we did settle on about five goals that will work up, Patrick and I will work up some language on, and we'll bring, we'll bring back to the Board for action at the September meeting. I'd also just like to revisit, under, as part of my comments, revisit some of those recommendations or ideas that I put out there regarding the budget process for this upcoming year. And I can repeat the four issues that relate to the Finance Committee and to the, to the development of the budget quickly. And then, if there's no objection on the part of anybody on the Board, I'll just suggest that we, we move forward with those recommendations. One was to change the schedule of the Finance Committee meetings to later in the afternoon, which hopefully will get more Board participation and hopefully public participation at those meetings. The second was to rotate regular meetings to the other buildings during the budget cycle, rather than, usually we front-load that rotation into our schedule. And the thought would be to have those, those meetings in other buildings during the budget period, which might give, again, might give individuals, parents, other community members from, from those parts of the RSU to participate and comment on, on issues that might pertain to their, their particular buildings. I had recommended that, in, in the, after the, the Board has had a chance to develop the budget, that we do a fairly high-profile district budget-wide workshop for PTAs, town officials, and the community at large. And then, with the annual budget, ask Patrick and the administrators to give us a multi-year perspective of what issues might not be addressed in the current budget, or in the, the proposed budget, but might be priorities for, for the administration to address in, in subsequent years. So there are those four things, and again, you know, if people don't have a strong feeling about, about them, I would recommend that we, that we make those changes and try to incorporate them into our, into our schedule. I know the comment had been raised that, as we get into winter, sometimes travel is a little bit difficult, and might that affect our ability to, to get down to Phippsburg or to get over to Woolwich. But I'm...
It's fall and spring.
I'm hopeful that we...
Certainly could implement it.
Yeah, yeah.
To get the winter under consideration.
Yeah. So, so if the Board doesn't have a strong feeling on this, or I'm opening it for comments, in June I did ask you to think about it all summer, and I'm sure you all spend lots of time with this. But if, if people don't have strong feelings on this, then, then I'm going to ask Patrick if, if he would factor these, these four recommendations into setting our, our Board schedule going forward.
I, I like the idea of the Finance Committee being in the afternoon. Some more people, like, I would be able to attend depending on the afternoon time. So, I like that.
Are you saying general Finance Committee? Or are you saying for the budget period?
I'm saying, general Finance.
General Finance?
Yeah.
That it would be in the afternoon?
Yeah.
But we haven't picked a time yet?
Right.
That's what we have to figure, okay.
Yeah. Depending on the time. I mean, the Finance Committee, Deb, we typically don't meet very often until the budget, the budget cycle begins. So we're really talking about a January ramp-up, I think, is when we generally get started, so.
Then you said, sorry, and then you just, just, I'm hearing you right, because I remember we went through this before, but, oh, the regular meetings later, so it fits with the budget cycle, right?
Yeah.
And then the workshops.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Okay, thanks. There, there was a corollary piece to this, and which was that, that we would periodically schedule workshops on, on programmatic issues, issues that, that the Board or the community generally felt important to discuss in more depth, and that these workshops would be a more interactive type of meeting, and would give the Board and the, an opportunity to engage the public, and the public to engage the Board in a, in a constructive way, rather than trying to do it, you know, this as a very formal meeting setting. If, if that's agreeable, it might mean, you know, three or four more meetings in the course of a year. We're not looking to do these monthly, but, but maybe every other month, or as the need arises. And again, if that's, if that's agreeable, then I'll, I'll work with Patrick to try to pick a topic for, we'll skip September and look at a, a date in October, when we might find a workshop. There's a couple of things that quickly come to mind as, as relevant topics. One would be this later start Committee work that's, that will be going on. I think that's something, obviously, the, the public would, would want to engage us on. And the homeless issue, you know, the issues facing homeless kids might be a, a good topic for us to, to talk about with the public. So I'll work with Patrick on that, and we'll come up with a topic. If anyone has a specific concern or topic they'd like, they'd like to throw in the mix, please, please do that. Okay, thank you. Item 6.0, we have minutes from our meeting of January 17th. Excuse me, June 17th. So I'd like a motion to accept those minutes, is right? So we have a motion by Lou, a second by Bill. Any corrections, discussions? If not, all in favor to accept? And anybody opposed? No? Okay. Item 7.0, adjustments to agenda? No? Patrick? Okay. Item 8.0, public session. And again, this is our first public session, and it's an opportunity for anyone to raise a question or comment on an item that's on, on the agenda. If not, no. Dean, Dean is anxiously awaiting his point, his time, so. Okay. Item 9.0, Committee Reports. 9.1 is on the Building Committee. Patrick? Building project, I'm sorry.
Yeah, for anybody that's driven through town this summer, you can see the steel that's gone up. And so, just a couple of things in your backup report, and I try to keep this simple, because not everybody is a contractor or a builder, and so, but the building footings and foundation walls are 95% complete. We're starting with the second-floor slabs, and constructing mock-up walls for review and approval. You can see the bridge that's starting to be built, if you drive by on Congress Street, and so there's still more work to be done on that. Building Committee will start meeting again in September, and some of the items this fall that we need to consider and eventually decide upon would be furniture for all the classrooms, but also in the specialist areas in the school. Interior colors, we need to kind of make decisions on that. And the sign out front, that would be down by Congress Street, what's that made out of? Does it include electronic component? What is the cost versus what is budgeted? And then, percent for art is a program through the state where we have certain amount of money to do a, an art project to enhance the school. And so you can do one project if you wanted to, or you can split it into two or three projects. So we will form a committee for that, which is exciting. I would say that tentatively, what's called a topping-off ceremony is going to be held the last week in September, and that's really where they put the last piece of steel on the building. And we will be working with the Building Committee and Central Office to decide, you know, who to officially invite, you know, the Building Committee, the people that have given money to the project. You know, we're going to try to make a, a big deal out of this. We think it's going to be on the 27th around noon. And so we, you sign the piece of steel with a Sharpie, and then the piece of steel gets put onto the building as the last piece of steel. So we expected that to happen in November, but it's been moved up to the end of September, which is good news for our schedule. Any questions, anybody has?
You said noon, I'm sorry.
We're thinking right now, we need to hear back from Harvey Construction and everybody, but we're looking at that Friday, 9:27 at noon. And we will be offering more tours, probably starting mid-September to various groups, and if there's anybody out there that, you know, would like a tour, just call Central Office and we'll make it happen.
I just had a question on the, on the rock face behind the athletic fields. Are they going to do anything to stabilize those?
We've talked to Crooker about that, and I, you know, we're going to have a couple more meetings on that. One thing that we have requested is, obviously, is them to put up a fence on the top as soon as possible, as well as, there'll be a fence, you know, at the bottom as well. But as far as the specific rock face, we're still in discussion about that.
I don't, I don't know if, has it, has anyone had an opportunity to go up to the site recently, or? I do, when, when Patrick sets those visits up for, for folks to do a walkthrough of the site, I recommend you do it. You don't, you don't really get the perspective of, of the work done from, from Congress, although you, you can see it for sure. You don't even get it, quite frankly, from the parking lot of the... You need someone to take you up top to really get it.
With the plan, so that you can point everything out.
Well, that, it's, it's, it's becoming clearer now what, what the, what the campus is going to look like. But, but do take advantage of any opportunity to get up there and see the amount of work that's being done. It's, it's really quite exciting, and, and as, as, as that work continues, it's going to grab this community with real force, so. Okay. 10.0, Superintendent's Report. 10.1, Patrick?
Over the summertime, just a lot of PD for all of our staff. We had the Tech Institute recently, thanks to Dean and his crew, ad team retreat, and new hires in the system. Right now, we just have a couple positions open. We have a librarian that is primarily at Phippsburg, but also shared between Dyke Newell and Fisher Mitchell. And then we have two kitchen assistants that are open right now. So that's, that's what we have at this point. I thought I would just go through quickly, the new hires. So, district-wide, we have Sarah Gagnon will be joining us as our ELL teacher for the district. And remember, budget-wise, she was, that position was 60% last year, and we have a 1.0 this year. And we have, you know, over the summer, probably another handful of ESL students that have come into the district, so that's a, a good thing. Bath Middle School, Micah, Micah Depper is a science teacher, Rick Hogan, math teacher, Jeff Bickford, math. Chantel Poland is an ed tech. Matt Braun is our new health teacher. Dane Dwyer has retired as a teacher and is coming back as a special ed ed tech. And Rachel Morse is a new English Language Arts teacher. At Vocational, you know that we brought back the electricity program, and Landon Hickson is our instructor. And then we have a new administrative assistant, Kristina McHugh. At Morse, we have John Devers for Social Studies. Nancy Riggs is returning to the system as a special ed teacher. Maria Nukem, who used to be here at BMS, is going to Morse as a health teacher. Jean Twomey is going from the middle school in foreign language to the high school. And Sarah Wilber is a special ed ed tech. At Dyke Newell, we have Melissa Bickford, Title I ed tech. Leslie Glant, new kindergarten teacher. Shalon Hersom is going to be moving from a classroom teacher into that behavior interventionist that the Board gave the okay to last year. And Jason Carter will be shifting time between Fisher Mitchell and Dyke Newell as a PE teacher. At Phippsburg, Donna Tardif is our new grade-one teacher, and Teresa McCartney is a new social worker. And at Fisher Mitchell, Sarah DeRosa, who used to be a social worker and ESL in the district, but she was a social worker at Phippsburg. She's now moving as a full-time social worker at Fisher Mitchell. Geraldine Toll is the academic interventionist at Fisher Mitchell, moving from a classroom teacher. Catherine Walsh, Special Education. Libby Zipperer, grade three. And Nancy Brown is an ed tech. And lastly, at Woolwich, we have Jane Pratt, a new administrative assistant in the office. Elaine Pinkham is our secretary bookkeeper. Jamie Schwalz, I'll get that right someday, and I know Jamie, science teacher at the middle school. Krista Walker, Special Education teacher. And Teresa McCartney, social worker, 60% at Woolwich. That's the piece that got put into the budget last year. So she's 60% at Woolwich, and it made sense for us to combine that with the 40% at Phippsburg to find a one full-time equivalent. Isabel Lappin is World Language. Jamie Wallace, Special Ed ed tech. And two more ed techs, Jean McGuigan is moving to Woolwich, and Tina Wallett as well. So, again, there was a time at the end of July when we had all positions filled, which is very uncommon. And then just recently, in the last week and a half, we've, you know, we got two or three positions to fill, which isn't bad at this time of year. Couple other things, just Set for Success happened yesterday right here at BMS from 10 to 2. Just a wonderful community event. I think we served 625 students, and in addition to free supply, school supplies, also received free haircuts, clothing, information from different community agencies. So very successful event. And last thing I'll just mention is, at the Vocational School, our numbers right now, we ended last year at 146 students, and we're projected to start the school year at 200 students. So that's good. At the same time, well, number one, we're putting electricity back in, so you're going to figure that's part of it. But, but some of our programs are, are full, and we have waiting lists on some of our, for programs. So the, the thing that we're contemplating at this point right now, which isn't new to the Board, is the possibility of at least trying to employ one ed tech to rotate between some programs, especially those programs that are tough to keep an eye on all students, carpentry, automotive, sometimes culinary, welding, just from a liability standpoint. So we did have an ed tech from Booth Bay for the last couple of years, but that was because of an IEP decision. So we have talked to the, to our schools that send students to us, and I know their budgets have already passed, but we're trying to come up with a way to support possibly hiring an additional ed tech at some point during this school year. So we would come back to you with a presentation. But I do want Julie Kenny to wait, because in those first couple weeks of school, sometimes students and families, you know, sometimes it may not be for them. And so I'd like to see what our numbers are closer to the end of September. But I just wanted to put that on your radar screen.
Thanks, Patrick. Any, any questions, Patrick, in this report? 10.2, Deb, Financial Report?
Okay. Hard to believe the end of summer. So tonight in your packet, you, I've got two financial reports, one for the end of June, and then this month of July. So, the end of June, our un-audited expense balance at this point is $443,000, which is a good thing. It's less than 1.5%. So that is close to, last year we had a little bit more than that left over in expenses, but we also gained this year a little bit more in our revenue. So overall, between expenses and revenues coming through, we're about in the same position that we were last year. Our expenses were over a little bit in special ed tuition, a little bit in school administration, and that was due to a common insurance plan change, and attorney, we, we had a sub in there. And then operation maintenance, David Cretjes, who was the first chair in the 17th budget rollover, but it was the Fisher Mitchell whole mission that caused that rollover. We gained a little bit more in tuition revenue, more in interest on investments, and additional state subsidy came in. And that was, they did an adjustment for special ads, out-of-district placement and enrollments, and a couple other little things for backproducts for tuition revenue. So, overall, the end of last year ended up on the blue side. Then, as we move into July, basically, the report that's in front of you shows that we spent 1.3 million on about $33 million budget. We've encountered $337,000, and that's basically placement orders for all of our supplies. So, we're at, basically, just the beginning stages. And we've actually built most of our positions that we've been filled, within budget. We've also enlarged our overall balance between what we budgeted, but we are within that budget. July's a little slower pace, but we're all back full force right now. I just want to thank Alita and Anne Marie George, who are our officers, and it's just, they really helped us manage the workload.
Thanks, Deb. Any questions for Deb?
I just, I do have a question. Patrick, and maybe Patrick would respond to this too. Our revenues on, on the BRTC, CTC side are down. We lost a grand.
Now, from what we budgeted, we budgeted $118,000 more, because we thought that additional money was coming in. It's not coming in, so basically, we just won't spend that $118,000 which we originally had planned on to let out for that. So at this point, that's, that's important.
And that, that, that loss, I mean, Julie's not here, but that loss shouldn't affect any, any, anything programmatic at the, it doesn't, it doesn't put any pressure on, that emanates from increased enrollment or anything like that? No, not at this point? Okay. Okay, thanks. Thanks, Deb.
11.0, Old Business. The, the membership of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee is the, is the, the item on the agenda. As, as most of you will remember, we had a great presentation at the, at the June meeting from a couple of students from Fisher Mitchell, asking us to set up an ad hoc committee on recycling. And representatives from the, from the City of Bath were here as well to, to support it. And we did vote unanimously to, to accept the students' recommendation and set up this ad hoc advisory committee. So I know Patrick's given some thought to it, so I'll let him...
Well, I don't know if I've given enough thought to it. I was really just asking to see if there was a Board member that had an interest in serving on this committee. And then I was going to go back and talk with Meg. I was going to talk with Mary from the city, and Peter Owen, and then kind of create the committee. But if it's going to be a, you know, an ad hoc or an advisory committee, whether there was a, a Board member tonight that had an interest, or if you want to get back to me and let me know. And I'll, over the next couple of weeks, I'll draft something about the, the membership and run it by the city, as well as the group that presented to us, to, to get that moving, so.
So even though the, the presentation and, and the students looked at Fisher Mitchell specifically, we've, we've broadened it to encompass all RSU One school facilities. So it's going to be a facility-wide effort to take a look at our recycling plan and what I've, what I've suggested, and what I think Patrick is, is going to, is going to charge this group to do, is to come up with a district-wide recycling plan. So it'll, it'll be great. It'll be a great exercise. If there's any, any Board member that's interested, let Patrick know. If not, I'll do it. I'll do it anyways. I mean, I think it, I think it'll be a very, a very interesting, a very interesting exercise. And I'm really excited that the students brought this one to us, so. It was a great, it was a great thing. Okay, 12.0, New Business Personnel Items. 12.1, Patrick?
Yeah, we, every year we just try to give you as many Schedule B appointments that we, you know, confirm, that we know of. So it's, and, you know, informational item, so you have that in your, in your backup. So we, we had a couple last-minute fills that we had to do for some sports at the middle school and high school, but we're good at this point.
Thanks. 12.2, we have an overnight field request, and this is an action item. So you, you have that in your packet. It's a field trip to the Ecology School at Poland Springs Resort, and this is the Ferry Beach trip, but it's been relocated because of, they're working on the facility at, at Ferry Beach, I guess. So do I have a motion to approve?
No move to approve.
Okay. Motion by Lou, second by Megan, all in favor? Any opposed? No? Okay. And 13-point, or 12.3, rather, approval of staff computer lease, leases. And Dean's here to give a presentation on it, and then we have a lease agreement to, to consider. Dean?
Yeah? In the board packet, there's a description of the staff license that they're planning to purchase. Looks basically, a new model that has come out that is more powerful, better processor, has more RAM, all of the construction with additional features and functions. So, so we find ourselves in a situation where we would like to be able to offer staff, better quality device, and establish a rotation so that our staff devices, the lease that covers the staff devices and the lease that covers the student devices overlap, so that we're not giving all student staff devices the same. This will give us a better distribution. It'll allow us to bring new devices into the district on an ongoing basis, rather than once every four years. It could be every two years, every three, three technologies. And it's how, we used to, longer, we used to have these overlapping leases and those very long for us. And so what we do is we take the license of the staff, currently have, and repurpose them into other areas so that we may use the licenses that we have at the same time we can offer staff the security device. And physically, it works without any increase of cost.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions, sir? Yep.
I didn't see an H254 on.
Yes, they do have H254. Yes, they do have HDMI. And these, in addition, one of the nice things about this unit is it has an HDMI port and it has USB-C. It has a USB standard USB.
What's the USB-C used for?
USB-C is a new protocol. It's used for everything. It's used for charging, it's used to connect multiple devices. We would be getting a USB-C adapter with these, basically a small USB-C hub that would provide all connectors that it uses.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, you probably said it was, these are good for, how long are these supposed to be good for?
Four years.
Four years? Okay. That's what I meant.
We always try to go four-year rotation.
Okay. Thanks.
What do we, we typically, generally, we have Apple computers now, the teachers?
We've got Chrome devices.
They're all Chrome? I know they were Chrome for students, but for the, for staff as well? Okay.
We have, we've got a commercial arts lab, it's an IMAC lab, we have a design workshop lab, there's some Mac books. All of our Level One devices are all Chrome, and pretty much all of our staff at this point with very few exceptions at all.
Are there, you know, is it time to start thinking about how all this comes together with the new school, in the new school, or?
I don't know.
It'll work anywhere.
Yeah, at least these are ready. They are reliable, stable, capable, and more and more capable every year. That, the Chrome of us is expanding its abilities significantly. So, yes, we met the RFT over the summer. You know, what we're looking at, we're integrating fully with the systems that are going on through the school.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions of Dean? No? Okay, if not, we have a resolution.
Lou?
Yeah. You just have to read the top part. Yeah, right, yeah. Not going to read the book. So, the motion, I move that the resolution entitled, "Resolution to authorize lease purchase of technology equipment in the principal amount of $195,000. Be adopted and formed, presented to this meeting."
Okay. We have a motion by Lou, second by Bill. Any questions? Discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? No? Go to it. Thanks, Dean. Okay, 13.0, this is our second public comment. And it's an opportunity for folks to raise any issues of concern that they may have with the board, if anyone has anything they'd like to say. If not, okay. And 14.0, set new next meeting date and location. So, we're scheduling our next meeting for September 23rd, again, at the middle school here. All right? And that's about it. We have, first day of school for faculty is Wednesday, and the kids come.
Majority come next Tuesday. Everybody comes on a Wednesday.
Okay. Tuesday, Wednesday, and then summer is over, so. All right, thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay. Motion by Bill, second by Lou. Any discussion, objections? All in favor? Any opposed? No? Thank you.